Okay. Welcome, everybody, to tonight's school board meeting for the Central School District. Happy New Year, everybody, and I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order. As you can see, we'll be doing our meeting tonight again virtually using Zoom here with the school board and then broadcasting out through YouTube. Why don't we go ahead and start with the flag salute? I think good if the board members came off of mute and as we do the flag salute. Good all, would you mind leaving us?
Absolutely. I mean, I wouldn't mind. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think that drives Zoom nuts if we're off mute. Yeah, that's a little different. I'm not sure if there's a best practice on virtual flag salutes. We'll have to look into that. Okay, let me turn it over to the superintendent to go over tonight's agenda.
We have a couple of adjustments to the agenda this morning. You will see at the end of the meeting, we have added addition of the executive session with the Board of Directors. And that will be at the conclusion of our meeting. And then we have removed from the agenda, the communication from the floor from CEA and OSEA. Because obviously, we're, this is our first day back. So again, those are the changes to the agenda.
Well, we do have an equity committee report out?
We do. We will have an update as well. Yep.
Excellent. Okay. Well, I think I'll turn it right back to you Superintendent Cavista for the first topic here.
Well, thank you. And this is my, my time of year. I'm appreciative of this time of year. And again, as we, before we begin our agenda this evening, January is Board of Director Appreciation Month. My honor and opportunity as a superintendent to share my appreciation for the Central School District Board of Directors. And again, I'm so appreciative, especially as the year that we have continued through. I think as we have continued to learn and grow each year since my arrival, there's a few things that have come to my mind that I just want to share as we've done this work collectively together. So first is the vision of the school district. And that the school district, again, when we think about vision and mission, that's really the district and community consensus on achievement objectives. Again, that's academically, socially, and emotionally. I think of what we have done collectively as a community, obviously, with the adoption of our strategic plan and continued focus on our goals and visions of student growth and achievement, family involvement, community partnership, and staff leadership and continuous improvement. I think also as part of that is that those quantifying those expectations into set agreed upon measurements for that achievement. And again, as we work through with our staff and community, the accountability system that we are continuing to build, which is also part of that strategic plan. So that's the first thing that comes to my mind in our work together. The second is culture and climate. And when you think about culture and climate, that really is to create that environment that supports the philosophy that all children can learn at a high level. We have created a culture and climate where we are listening to understand, whether it be student voices that we heard in August, to our families and partnerships during committee meetings and board meeting public comments. The board continues to listen and we learn and adjust for safety, health, in the best interest of our students, families, and our community as a whole. We have created a culture, which you are a part of, where we have difficult conversations. We stay at the table in those conversations and doing what's right and just for our students, first and foremost, our staff, and the families of our Central School District 13J community. I'm also, what I'm also very appreciative of the board is the diverse views each board member brings. And we continue the dialogue, especially during this past year. I think the board's continued focus on equity and our drive to develop and the culture and climate to support our diverse students within our community is commendable. The third area I want to just have and recognize with the Board of Directors is the collaborative relationship. And again, when I think of that, that's modeling behavior that emphasizes trust, teamwork, and shared accountability. The board's commitment and involvement in negotiations as we build collaborative relationships with our staff leadership during this process builds trust and teamwork. Not always easy in those conversations, but we stay in them again. And I'm very appreciative to the board members that continue to be a part of that process. I think the board's involvement as committee members in our community committee, in our district equity committee, and in the policy subcommittee again, shows that continued collaborative relationship that we're trying to build. And then again, how the board continues to build and model the importance of trust, teamwork, and shared accountability. And, and final piece really is focused on the Board of Directors and superintendent relationship. In our, in our superintendent Board of Directors agreement, we have a purpose statement. And I am going to take a second to read this. And it reads, "The Board of Directors is the educational policy-making body for Central School District 13J. To effectively meet the district's challenges, the school board and superintendent must function together as a leadership team to ensure unity among team members." And unity doesn't always mean that we are in agreement. Again, that's just that we have unity as we do this work. Effective group agreements must be in place. And so I just want to highlight a couple of our agreements that we have that I think show our growth and learning together as we continue through this process. So again, members of the board and the superintendent shall work as a team. I have never, it has been never been so clear as what we have had to work through this past year during the pandemic. As I've already shared with you, we have continued to come and have hard conversations. We continue that dialogue and make decisions that are right and just for our students, staff, family, and our community. You have always been available for me for conversation whenever I needed it, whether that is on a Saturday morning, bright and early, whether that's a late evening phone call to one of you. Each of you have been there when I needed a thought partner, a diverse view, someone to think, push me differently, a parent perspective, or an educator perspective. Each one of you brings those for me as the superintendent each and every day. And I'm grateful for that each and every day. You support decisions of the majority after honoring the rights of individual board members to express opposing viewpoints and vote with your convictions. Again, I'm going to, this sort of sounds like a broken record, but I think that this has been a big part of our conversation this past year. You have stayed in the arena through intense dialogue, always keeping students, staff, families, and our community at the forefront. You continue to communicate openly and honestly with me when questions arise or concerns are voiced. Again, we don't shy away from difficult conversations. We're always listening first to understand. Again, looking at all diverse viewpoints and again, doing what's right and just for our students and staff. Again, part of that is respecting differences and listening well for positive intent, operating as representatives and making decisions in the best interest of the whole district. We have grown as a board in the last two years, listening to understand, listening to all voices, while always staying positive as we make the decisions for Central School District 13J. You continue to, the efforts to foster unity, harmony, and open communication amongst the board. And with that, my final statement is, what I want to read today is the School Board Recognition Month proclamation. And that proclamation reads, "Whereas school boards create a vision for what students should know and be able to do, whereas school boards establish clear standards for student performance, where school boards ensure that student assessments are tied to established standards, whereas school boards are accountable to the community for operating schools that support student achievement, whereas school boards align school district resources to ensure that students meet standards, whereas school boards create a climate that supports the philosophy that all children can learn at high levels, whereas school boards build collaborative relationships based on trust, teamwork, and shared accountability, and whereas school boards are committed to continuous education and training on issues related to student achievement. Now, therefore, Central School District 13J hereby declares our appreciation to the members of the Central School Board and proclaim the month of January to be the School Board Recognition Month. We urge all citizens to join us in recognizing the dedication and hard work of our local school board members and preparing students for tomorrow's world." And again, from me as the superintendent, and it is, I am honored and thank you for your continued dedication as board members for Central School District. We will continue to do this work. We know it's not easy. And this has been probably by far one of the toughest years we have all been through. I wouldn't want to do it with any other board. As I say, I wouldn't want to do it with any other staff or any other community. So I'm very appreciative of each and every one of you as we continue this work together. So thank you all for your, for your service.
Thank you for those very kind words. And you certainly help it make it easy for us. So thank you to, to you superintendent. So I think that brings us then to communications from the floor. And I believe we actually have some this evening. So I'll turn it back over to the superintendent and to the team here to get those folks online.
Yes, and we are going to, I know Emily Mensah is about to, we're going to promote a couple of the staff that are online. So Emily, which is our first one?
Janika Duncan is our first public comment.
Is somebody working to get everybody on board? I saw a bunch of texts going back and forth.
Yes, we are done.
Go ahead, Janika.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, my name is Janika. I have five kids in Central, ranging from a senior in high school to a preschooler. And I'm also a certified substitute in Central School District. I have a degree in elementary education and have been able to sub in the schools throughout Central. And as the shutdown continued, I became very concerned about the students in Central in particular because of being able to work with them and knowing some of the things that they are struggling with. I started an advocacy group at the end of September to help schools reopen. And as part of that, have been able to meet people from throughout the state. And I can tell you, I could sit here for an hour and rattle off to you their heartbreaking stories of how their children and their families are suffering because of the continuation of no school. Yesterday, I was able to attend a rally in Portland organized by a young eighth grader who started cutting herself when lockdown started and has continued to remain suicidal since she hasn't been able to attend school. And at that rally, I also met some parents of children who have committed suicide in this past year in Oregon and Washington. And their common theme was that they believed if schools were open and if sports had been allowed, both of their children were involved in football and volleyball. They believe that their children would be alive. And they were there, one of them actually said she hadn't wanted her daughter to go back to school. She was scared by, because of COVID. And now she's advocating for schools to open because she doesn't want that to happen to anyone else. In October, I was reached out to by a young woman who is a junior at Central who heard about the advocacy that I was doing and asked how she could help get schools open. She shared with me a screenshot from her class where the teacher had asked anonymously how the students were doing. So these are junior, or these are not juniors, but these are students at Central. And their responses made me cry at the time. Some of them said, "School is the hardest part. I feel like I am not learning anything. Very, very stressed being in distance learning. My grades are not the same as they were within person. They have dropped very badly. I am very behind in school and it stresses me out. My parents don't understand that. It is difficult because they don't understand. It is very traumatic. There's lots of terrible things happening all at once. It is very overwhelming. I have less motivation online than I do when we are in the building. I feel like I'm not learning anything, but it's also because of the lack of drive. I am a lot more insecure about my personal intelligence and passion with school than I was. Lately, I feel like I want to give up. I am doing worse in school. I used to be a straight A student, but now I'm having trouble keeping up. Makes me kind of sad." This same young woman told me, "I know too many kids," this was in a message. She said, "I know too many kids who are in a literal state of depression, like me, actually. I'm constantly struggling and feeling useless." So my, my plea to Central, to the board, to the superintendent, to the teachers is now that the metrics are not mandatory, is that we begin now to do all that we can to get our students back in the classroom. It has been done safely throughout the United States. It has been done safely in Oregon. The metrics have changed several times and are likely to change again. I'm so concerned about the mental state of the children in our district. And Colt Gill is the referrer of the Oregon Department of Education. And he said in a webinar last month, "Our message nationwide is that it is not yet safe to go to school. And now we're learning that it is, and we need to make sure folks understand that and understand the reasons why." The research basically says that schools are not super spreaders, that they are very safe, structured locations, and maybe safer for our students and staff members to be there for six, eight hours a day than other places in the community. So I would just ask that, that the board and the superintendent can please make every effort to begin getting kids back in school now. I know Dallas has started that process and Albany has, Sheridan has. I'm concerned about our kids being left behind if we don't start now and get kids back in, at least by the start of second semester. Thank you.
Thank you, Janika. I think for all the messages that you've been sending in advocacy. It's, it's, I mean, we, we hear you. We really do. So appreciate your, your point of view and sharing your thoughts and keep it up.
Yes, thank you, Janika.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, next we have Sonia. Can I say that right? You can go ahead and unmute now.
Oh.
You're unmuted.
Okay. All right. Can you guys hear me?
We can.
Awesome. I don't know if my camera is on or not, but.
It's a picture of me.
Okay, cool. That works. All right. So I am also here to advocate for our schools to reopen. I am a parent of a second and fourth grader at Ash Creek Elementary School, and I have nothing but wonderful things to say about my children's teachers and administrators. Unfortunately, though, I cannot say the same about distance learning. And I firmly believe it does not work. Our family has been lucky enough to not experience difficulties with internet access, but unfortunately, that is not the case for everyone. There are many students without this, within our district who have not received any type of education since March 13th. I know without a doubt, my children are only learning a fraction of what they would if they were attending school in person. I am concerned that my kids, along with so many others, simply do not have the capability to really focus on what is being taught in the same manner as they could in person. Even though teachers are doing the best they can, I feel like Central students are currently not receiving the right to a proper and equitable education. Although possible, for the most part, I believe it is very difficult to really connect through a computer screen. There are so many students who struggle academically, but also socially, who really need the encouragement and support from their teachers and other staff. And that support is best provided in person. Kids really need their friends, their teachers, their counselors, their coaches, their teammates, and also their athletic and other extracurricular outlets. What really frustrates me is the fact that private schools in Oregon, as well as public schools in other states and countries, have been able to hold all day, every day, in-person schooling since the beginning of the school year. Nowadays, everything is about equity and equality, but distance learning is the furthest thing from that. It doesn't seem fair that other places value their, the importance of their students' education more so than what we do here. The fact that Oregon's private schools have resumed in-school in-person also tells me that anyone who is able and willing to pay gets the right to an education, and that is not equitable. I have seen plenty of research that supports that there's absolutely no evidence that in-person school has caused any major COVID outbreaks anywhere, especially if proper COVID precaution protocols are followed. I have plenty of family members and friends in other states who have been teaching and sending their children to school all year long without any issues. No one has gotten COVID because they attend school in person, and none of them feel at risk or in danger to teach or attend school. However, there is more than enough evidence that keeping our children out of school leads to severe mental health issues such as, such as suicide or depression. And then also, it leads to academic failure. Currently, roughly, roughly 50% of Oregon students are failing, which is not okay. I believe our children's future is at risk. And now that Oregon's governor has released authority for the reopening of schools to each local school district, I hope he will do what is right and necessary. Being a substitute, I am more than willing to sub for any teacher who's not comfortable coming in. I would gladly be able to walk back into a school building filled with the smiles and laughter of our children. Please at least give us the choice of returning to in-person learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Sonia.
Thank you so much for your input.
Okay, next we have Tia.
Hi, my name is Tia Lewis. And I sent all of you an email this morning regarding my own children's struggles with distance learning. Now, I would like to urge you once again to begin offering in-person learning to families, teachers, and staff who would be comfortable with that option. Everyone should have a choice. I'm frustrated that for many months, Central School District could have been offering limited in-person instruction according to Ready School Safe Learners, but chose to do nothing. Ready School Safe Learners outlines the safety protocols that should be used for in-person instruction. As a childcare provider myself here in Oregon, I'm fully aware of the lengths the state has gone to to ensure that our kids and teachers would be safe. If it is safe for me to watch other people's children in my home, I'm confident it would be just as safe, if not safer, at school. The biggest difference I see is that I had to carry out all of those cleaning and safety protocols by myself for tireless hours every single day. At school, there would be an entire team available to make sure that everything was done safely, not to mention that kids have proven to be amazing when it comes to wearing masks and following safety measures, much better than I had ever anticipated anyways. We also cannot continue to rely on case counts for Polk County when a majority of the county's cases are coming from the West Salem Retirement and Nursing Home communities. Those numbers have little to no impact in regards to COVID spread in our little community. I'm hearing that Dallas has plans to start offering a hybrid option soon. If they can do it, so can we. We need to follow science and stop leaving in fear. I hope that you will take the time to look over the COVID library report that I sent to you in an email. The CDC, Anthony Fauci, Colt Gill, and even my children's own pediatrician are now saying that schools can be opened safely. There are schools all over the world that are doing it with great results. I encourage you to look at the schools with positive outcomes and follow their lead. I realize that there are places that are not having the best results. The difference is, is they are not doing things in a safe way. That's not what any of us want. I know that equity has been a major concern. Distance learning is not equitable. It leaves lower-income families, children with learning disabilities, single-parent families, minorities, and countless others at a real disadvantage. We cannot continue saying that we are doing everything in the name of equity as long as kids can't be in a classroom. And whether you believe it or not, CDL is greatly affecting the mental health of many of our kids here. I can account for this personally, as I witnessed how this has affected my own kids, their friends, and even my friends' children. My son confided into me that one of his best friends is cutting himself. And I can't, I can't deal with that. We have to do something. They need to be in the classroom right now. It's not okay to trade one generation for another. Kids are not super spreaders. There is so much data to support this, and it's largely being ignored. I'm fed up with the kids bearing the biggest burden of this pandemic. We need to act now. The damage is, before it's completely unrepairable. I would like for you to give us a date that we can count on seeing our kids back in the classroom.
Thank you, Tia. Thank you.
Tia.
Thanks, Tia, for, for that. Very passionate. I appreciate it.
Okay, and last we have Amber.
Can you hear me?
We can.
And you can see, and you can hear me. Okay. Can you hear? It looks like I cut out for a second. Okay. This happens when my kids try to school. My name is Amber. I have three kids in the school district, two in high school and one in middle school. But two out of my three are really, really struggling. Um, one of them did attempt suicide and was in a psychiatric treatment center for three weeks. Another one, similar type situation. All of them are involved in school counselors, community mental health counselors, trying to help them. But so far, it's just been a very, very difficult year. And both of them are doing horribly in school. And the consensus really is for them to focus more on their mental health than their education. And so as a result, both of them are just, their education's pretty much nonexistent. I have one student who's holding her own. But one of them is basically just refusing to log on. And, and I've just kind of threw my hands up in the air, and I'm thinking, this is just a lost year. And I don't know. I don't know how she's going to get caught up. Um, and same with my other one. The, the teachers have been great. They understand that they're struggling. They have offered one of them to go from doing virtual classes to pass, no pass packets to try to relieve some of the pressure and stress. But she's falling behind on that too and getting overwhelmed. And overall, it's just going to feel a really big struggle. And I wanted to say is that I have a very healthy respect for COVID. I'm not one of those people who thinks it's a hoax or not serious. In fact, I had it seven months ago, and I'm still dealing from that fallout. But I think we have to weigh all of the pros and cons and the benefits and the risks. And it seems to be school is an area with the, with the lower amount of risk than so many other industries in Oregon. And, and we need to show that we value that industry, that we value education more than we value casinos, more than we value whatever else. You know, and I just think that for the sake of the kids, for the sake of not giving up on their education and their mental health, that we really, like, like Janika says, at least gives, at least offer a choice. You know, not make anybody go back that doesn't feel safe or not my teachers, but give at least a choice because right now, what we're doing is not working. So thank you.
We have Leslie. I'm sorry, Leslie.
Thank you for your input, Amber.
Oh, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Okay, sorry about that. My Zoom restarted. I guess first I would like just to thank all the other moms that have been on this call. When I filled out the comment card this morning or last night, I really didn't know what to say other than, I guess I'm just looking for kind of what Central's plan is for reopening. I very much appreciate and I'm thankful for all the moms who have so eloquently talked about their struggles with their kids and how that's had a really personal impact to them. I too like to advocate for schools reopening. I have a kindergartner at MES, and I have a second grader. And we moved here right when the pandemic started. So my kids unfortunately have not had any opportunity to make friends. And so my children have had no social interaction with other children since March of last year. And so while my children are doing fine academically, And so while my children are doing fine academically, um, they are not doing okay uh socially. And it's um, it's not as bad obviously as what um the last um woman was saying. But I think, you know, trading one generation for another generation is a really um good comment because what are we doing to our children now by having distance education? It is not working. It's not working for those families who are able to uh be at home with their children. I was never meant to teach my children. I am not doing a great job. The relationship between my my children and myself and the the tension that that creates when we're in our house a hundred percent of the time is difficult. And we, it's not just it's hard today. These are difficult. Um, you know, when something happens over and over again, we're creating issues that we're gonna have to overcome and fix later on as well. And so how are we going to, you know, I guess navigate this long term? I didn't have a whole lot prepared to say other than, you know, I know teachers unions are advocating for teachers and you guys probably the staff probably have staff that are advocating for their staff. And um, there is no union, there is nothing advocating for our children other than our parent, you know, other than me and, you know, the other parents who are speaking. And so I would just ask that we do get our children and allow an option for those of us who either desperately want our children to be back in school or desperately need them. Um, you know, we, somebody mentioned that some kids have been out of school since March thirteenth and that is unacceptable. Um, we have failed, we have failed our students and our children by allowing that to happen. Um, and so please, please just let us have a choice to send our children back to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thanks. I think it's a bad sign when everybody is muted.
No, we 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 hit the wrong button, so we have him back and Steve, all you.
Is that everybody that got?
Yes, that was our final public comment, correct.
It looks like we all and Dawn are still muted.
Oh, I'm not muted anymore.
No, you're not. I could just see your microphone turned on, but Dawn, now Dawn.
I'm muted because I want to be.
Okay.
Okay, well, uh, just again, I wanted, I was trying to say I really appreciated everyone that just uh shared, shared their comments with the board. And I uh, I think it was all really well said and I think we all, you know, were listening intently and taking it all to heart. And it will definitely lead into our superintendent's report tonight and what we're gonna be talking about in terms of our plans for the district. Uh, but next up, uh, we don't have the association reports, so that brings us to our financial reports. Cease, can I turn it over to you?
Uh, thank you. Yes, although there was nothing included in your packet uh this month. The uh, we had a glitch in our payroll system and so the encumbrances for payroll, which make up the bulk of the balance of our um projected expenses, we're we're not accurately portrayed as of November thirty first. That's been corrected. So when I present the December thirty first numbers, um, it will be a more accurate representation, but it uh, the the report was and I couldn't manually calculate it in time to get that for you. So, nothing for me tonight, but we do have Alex on the line to update about food service.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Hi, Alex.
Great. Hello, everybody. Um, you should have received an update from me uh talking just a a basic update. Um, we're about ten months into this. Uh, my staff have been working pretty hard tirelessly through breaks. Uh, we did, we were able to get them some time off during the winter break while still feeding. Um, having food available for students. Um, during the last few months, we've also worked with Patty at the Ella Karan Food Bank uh to help them in their distribution efforts. Um, they've been providing additional foods for us at Ash Creek to hand out on top of the um grab and go bags as well as they organized with the Marion Polk Food Share, the farm-to-family food boxes uh for the last few months. We helped or they gave with our assistance and thanks to Ashley for uh Wildfang at Ash at Aces for letting us use her parking lot. But for the farm-to-family food boxes, we, they gave out approximately twenty-five hundred boxes for nine thousand meals between October and December, as well as three hundred and twenty-five Thanksgiving meal boxes for fourteen hundred meals. Um, our biggest issue outside of the virus issues um and related supply chain, but we've been working with our normal vendors and some additional vendors to make things happen and uh keep everybody supplied. We've been lucky in the fact we've been able to make sure we meet our food requirements, nutrition requirements. Um, there have been struggles in the state, some places have not, but we've been able fortunately to do that. Um, there's some numbers down at the bottom of my page. Uh, we've been lucky enough to stay um self-sustaining. We've not had to um reach into the um general fund for any reason, been able to keep it in the black at this point, been break even, a little better than break even, and our goal is to keep it that way. Um, I give you some numbers about um average days or how many, an average daily meal served for both November and year-to-date for the school year. Um, does anybody have any questions?
Alex, I don't, I don't have a question, but I I have a comment, maybe a possible uh maybe uh connection of some sort. I know that uh, that St. Patrick's Church is doing a lot of food boxes. They they haven't got the renewal of the, whatever their farm-to-family boxes are. But I was wondering, is is there any way that, you know, the people that come in for for either the grabbing-go-meals or the other farm-to-family boxes? If there's a way that maybe if St. Patrick's would print out maybe like a little flyer as to when theirs is gonna happen? Um, could we like collaborate? Or they, I'm not, I'm, my dad's part of the of the church of the Knights of Columbus there and they're the ones that operate it. Um, perhaps maybe we could uh get you guys together and and have like a flyer that that you could hand out or have available to where that people would know that there's additional foods available?
Oh, I I think we can certainly, I think we could certainly do that. And I believe the food they got was the same.
Yeah.
The farm-to-family food box was the same, and I think
I think it is.
For the season.
It's just a different day of the week, you know, I think Thursday, Friday was where where Aces was and they're like Monday or Tuesday.
Um, Yeah, they did that intentionally to make sure there were more days available for people to pick up. I know that Patty at the food bank was in in was in contact with someone at um St. Patrick's, but I I don't know.
Okay.
I think she's been coordinating between the two and getting families to know they could go to both, so.
Mm-hmm.
Sir, a quick question, Alex. On the food supply chain, I had the impression just from watching stories on the news and whatnot that that had pretty well worked itself out. Is that still getting worse or is it getting better?
It's changing.
Okay.
Um, several um suppliers are cha- they're struggling with their food chain. So items that we would normally buy are being discontinued because they're shrinking their product lines. Um, luckily, the items that we use are primarily the main, are the main lines that are still on. We have had to switch some suppliers. I mean, for example, corn dogs, the the one company we bought them from Cargill is discontinuing, so we're buying Foster Farm. And we just were able to switch to our same supplier. Uh, we did have struggles with some paper supplies and the plastic bags that we used to hand out, but we just got a pallet shipment. Um, I, somewhere in Wisconsin, I believe it was from, and nobody in Oregon could supply us what we needed for the amount we needed at the time. But uh, overall, the supply chain is working. It's just, it's a little more work right now.
Hey, Alex, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Jan, I just wanna thank you again for the extraordinary efforts you and your people have done to serve our community. I'm not sure if the community recognizes the role that schools play in feeding children, clothing children, getting children social services. It's the role of schools in these current times is far beyond the typical expectations of schools in terms of academics. I know that you've worked tirelessly and endlessly to make sure that people get food, which is almost incomprehensible in the United States of America, that we have people suffering absolute food insecurity. And what you and your staff are doing is so admirable. I don't know if the community knows how far you have gone, way beyond the expectations of a school food service, which gives kids breakfast, lunch and dinner. So I think you're a hero. I think your people are heroes and I'd like that people who are listening to this board meeting recognize the extraordinary amount of effort the school district and you and your people are doing to help end hunger in this horrible, horrible time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Janice. And I I I can't say enough about the the nutrition staff. They, they surprise me every day. They they get out there, they smile, and if someone's having a bad day, they work together to put the smile back on and they they they, I can't, I can't speak highly enough about the staff. They, they make us all look good and they make each other look good and they just, they're here because they care and they don't want kids to go hungry. They, they have a strong connection with the students and the children. Many of them are mothers and grandmothers and just really wanna make, take care of the kids. So k- kudos to them. Thank you.
Well, we were talking about uh kids' physical needs. I just wanna take the opportunity to let the board know and share around that. Um, The Gate worked with Joel at the high school and so the Panther Pantry is now up at The Gate. And uh, speaking of food, we've worked with Patty at the food bank and uh she's supplied some of the snack items that were in the Panther Panther pantry. They need a different name for that. Uh, so if if you hear of kids that are struggling and need clothes or socks or any of that kind of stuff or need some snacks, uh, I think it's open like from one to three in the middle of the week. Uh, so just uh send them uh that direction.
Great, thanks, Dawn. And thanks again, Alex, for the uh, the report and all the uh, the extra and hard work that you're doing. Appreciate it very much.
Oh, you're very welcome. Thank you all for your support.
That brings us to our Equity Committee Report uh topic. Turn that back over to the superintendent.
Thank you. And uh, joining us this evening as we promote them into the meeting are are two people, both from Ash Creek. One is a teacher, Hope Wanaki, and the other is Ashley Wildfang, who is the principal of the building. Uh, they are part of our District Equity Committee Committee and they will be updating you today on the progress of that work. So, uh, welcome, Hope and Ashley.
Thank you. And I apologize that I don't have my camera on, but um from my home, my internet, internet is not strong. So, um, I can't have my camera on. But um, with that, we'd just like to say good evening, Board Chairperson Love, Chairperson, Vice Chairperson Klein, Superintendent Cabista and members of the school board. My name's Ashley Wildfang and I'm the principal at Ash Creek.
My name is Hope Wanaki. I'm a first grade teacher at Ash Creek. I'm also the school-based equity facilitator, like the team that we have. Thanks for this opportunity to update you on the important work we're doing on the Central School District Equity Team.
And we've had one additional equity team meeting since the December board meeting, so we have a brief but important update for you this month. As our colleague shared last month, our district equity team is made up of district employees of various backgrounds and experiences. Our membership body includes licensed and classified staff, building administrators, school board, vice chairperson Klein and superintendent Cabista. And in December, we welcomed our newest team member, Maria Nunez from Talmage.
So during our December meeting, we began as a whole team and then we transitioned back into small breakout rooms to continue working on our ten actual item, action items. The action items were identified based on a survey that all team members took and ranked I and ranked identified tasks as either high, medium or low priority um at the current time. We then took the tasks that were rated at or above fifty percent as our current action items. Uh, our ten action items are Equity Professional Development, All Students Belong Policy, Student Voice Committee, Intentionally Hire, Retain and Support Staff of Color, Gather Feedback and Solicit Input From Staff of Color, Develop Equitable District Communication, Review District and School Data, Establish Equity Teams at Each School Site and District, Conduct Empathy Interviews With Students, For Example, COVID and Dropout Rates And Update Our Bully Policy and AR.
Um, each of those ten action items have four specific questions or tasks that we complete. So, um, for example, the action item, conducting empathy interviews with students and families. And that group is working through the following questions. One is what type of training is needed for staff to conduct empathy interviews? How do we select the students and families to interview? Also, what will we do with the information gathered? It's really important that in this work that we have a plan um following these um interviews and information gathering and what questions we are gonna ask when we are doing those interviews. So, um, and in our December meeting, um, we had group time to work on our action items. And we initially gathered together as a group and um to share out, and then we did breakout rooms to work on our action items. Then we came back together and and just um shared out and had a discussion about potential professional development opportunities for our team. And that's really where we're at with our team. It's um just been, personally, I know for me, a really wonderful and great opportunity to learn from others and grow. Um, and we wanna thank you for the opportunity to update you on the work we're doing as an equity team. I'd also just love to take a minute to um recognize Hope because as she shared, um, she is our um our facilitator at Ash Creek and she really has, is just doing an outstanding, amazing job leading our team. And um, we have a large group of um staff members on our team and she's, we've, she's led us through book studies already. And um, we're talking next steps about um our building uh professional development. So I just wanted to share that because it's just been wonderful, her leadership and thank you. We are available if you, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thanks, Ashley and Hope.
Okay, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ashley. Thank you, Hope.
Ash, actually, I had one question that just dawned on me, if you're still there.
Yeah, sure.
Um, so the, the connection that or the team that you and uh Hope have, is there a a team like that in every school?
Oh, thank.
Is it like that?
Thank you for asking. That is one of our action items this year that we have um a a team at each school building. And I know at this time we have many in place and then the other schools um are in the process of developing.
That's awesome. Yeah, I think that would be very important to have in in all of those. And then you guys could all congregate and throw ideas around and achievements and goals and that would be great.
Yeah, exactly. Good question. Well, thank you, Hope. Thank you, Ashley. Appreciate you joining us this evening and keep up the great work. Well, we're uh, all of us are really interested in seeing and where the committee goes and seeing what we can do to help. And Peggy, thanks for being our representative on on the committee.
Thank you so much.
Uh, that now brings us to our superintendent's report, so back to you, Jen. That now brings us to our superintendents' report. So, back to you, Jennifer.
Thank you, and thank you, Ashley and Hope. As I have shared, it's a great honor to serve with all of those members, as, as all of our committees that are working extremely hard in the school district as we continue to move the work forward. So, we are going to transition and share just a quick PowerPoint that we want to share with the, the board, and obviously with the, the community this evening. So just give us a second to get that up. And going here, just give us a second. You, perfect. Next slide for me, please. So, we want to just, as we start, this is what I'm going to call, as of January 21, January 1, 2021, the metrics as shared by several of our presenters this more, this, this evening from our community, that these metrics that I have on this screen are now advisory for districts to be able to make decisions about what our instructional model will look like. We, I wanted to start with this because we expect, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the governor's five action points, but we expect that these metrics are potentially going to change either on or before January 19. We're not sure what that's going to look like, but again, just want to start with the community saying that these metrics are still in place. Previously, they were mandatory. They are now considered advisory. As I shared at the last board meeting, we are going to continue, and we have a good plan, really focused on our K5 in place, and our goal is to begin to phase that approach in to in-person learning, and again, beginning at the elementary level. So again, just starting with, these are the metrics that we have shared before. Previously, they had been mandatory, but they are still now considered advisory metrics as we make decisions moving forward. Next slide for me, please. So this is the current Central School District metrics table. You can see on here, we, we did have an update today. So again, you can see really the last month look back of where we are. I think one of the pieces that I want to share is, I know that there is concern that most of the cases are coming from West Salem. Please know that we are looking at our specific ZIP codes of both Independence and Monmouth in our collaboration and conversations with the Oregon Health, excuse me, the Polk County Health Department. We know that we still have high caseloads in our ZIP codes and continue to monitor that. So again, as we see those numbers, our, our cases for the amount or percentage of, of population that we have are high for both Independence and Monmouth as compared to Dallas and our West Salem. So again, we, we do look at that data as we make decisions. I, I think a positive thing that we were seeing in the last four months, as you can see from this slide, is that we were actually moving downwards. So we went from 401 to 373 to 354. We know that this past week, the caseload, or the, the case county rate has jumped again. As I shared at the last board meeting, there are some concerns with the two holidays that have happened in the last two weeks of what that may look like. And again, looking at not only just our entire county, but specific to our, our ZIP codes with that. So again, we just want to share currently from the dates 12/20 to 1/12, that our case rate is 396.7 per 100,000, and our test positivity is 8.8. You heard me say, and I will continue, that the safety of students and staff in the district is our number one priority. We, like everyone else, do want students in school, but we want to do it at, at a safe approach and what that looks like. I am still very concerned that our metrics are in the 300s, and again, we are looking at those ZIP codes. And as I shared before, really focused on how do we, once we have students in schools, that we have that sustainability, that they're staying in there and not having the in and out, which is one of my concerns. We, we know that it's not in the best interest of both our students, our staff, and our families to have to do a stop-start. We talk a lot about, especially at the beginning of the year, especially with students, about routines and doing those routines. And we know, as we had moved to distance learning, that we know that this isn't the, the greatest environment for students to learn, but we have an amazing staff that works extremely hard to make those situations when they're day-to-day learning as best as possible. And we have done a phenomenal job with that, our teaching staff. Again, I'm blessed to, to have a teaching staff that really has rolled up their sleeves and are continuing to support students. And we know that being in the classroom is, is the number one, is, is the best way for kids to learn, and our, our goal is to get there. However, having kids go in and out, again, we're having to not only look at what's going on, but we also keep metrics on what's going on with our staff. We keep metrics on when we're getting information about students who have tested positive and conversations with, and, and guidance from our health county, Polk County partners. So again, I just want to show you this. We will continue to use the metrics. It is advisory, but it will help us as we continue to make these decisions moving forward. Next slide for me, please. I think the one thing that I want to share, and it has brought, been, it was brought up, and I appreciate all the parent voices as we continue to listen and as we make decisions. And part of that, we have been in, in conversation, and will continue to be conversate, in conversations with our Polk County, both on the mental health and behavioral health side of the, of the, as we do this work in moving to in-person. I think one of the key points that was shared with us last week, as we started some collective meetings together with our county partners, and even our school districts around us, one of the things that was brought up to us is what's called the cycle of societal disappointment cycle. And on the right side here is just an example of the response that's required if we were to have an outbreak in the school. Now, we know this is, we believe we're going to have new guidance coming forth, but as this example shows, that when students are in a classroom and we do get any type of positive case, whether that be a staff or a student, that we will need to shut down specific classrooms. It could be classrooms in a bus cohort as we work through this. So again, I just use this as an example. And one of the things our mental health partners shared with us is that this cycle happens when people get their hopes up, only to potentially take step backwards, which can be more detrimental to the current state of affairs. And so again, we're continuing to weigh and look at everything, why we would continue to look at phasing in our work with our partners, again, using the metrics as an advisory guidance to make sure that we are avoiding as best as possible, especially as we plan. Again, that continued in and out. We know that there's some changes that will be happening or have happened with the CDC, so that period of 14 days, again, this is an old example, because it's not been updated yet, but we know that those metrics are actually moving to seven to 10 days. So again, some of those changes are happening to align with the Center for Disease Control. But again, I want to be clear, we are looking at what I'm going to say are multiple metrics, not only what's going on in our county, what's going on in our specific ZIP codes, having conversations, obviously with our staff, continuing to listen to the voices of our parents, and really trying to build the best plan, because we all want kids in our, in our buildings as well. And again, we want to make sure that we are doing that in a safe way. We know also that this is, as we move into in-person learning, that this is going to be our reality for a few months, and that, and really probably into next year, that we are going to potentially be, be working through of, how do we get students in safely? How do we keep them in safely? I think it's the reality that even as we get students in, there is a potential that we will have an outbreak. That is part of the reason we had started limited in-person instruction at a small level with the goal to, to continue to expand that, that had started in November, but we had an outbreak. And so again, when you have an outbreak and there is a connection, things get shut down. And then you have to have that wait-out period. And then again, after we had closed down in less than two weeks, we were up in the 400 case count. Again, Polk County Health Department, they are a partner, they're a guide, they don't drive decisions for me, they are thought partners with me, they're very transparent with me of what concerns are happening in our community, and we're continuing to have that, that open conversation. So please know that, that we are also, we, we know that this environment for all students, and not only in Oregon, but across the country, this has been very difficult. But we're also having information shared with us from behavioral health and mental health of some other concerns that we just need to take in consideration as we, as we plan and build to move to in-person learning. So I want to be clear right now with where the metrics are. As I shared at the last meeting, we are going to really stay in distance learning. Our goal is to build, and we have been, and I'll share a little bit here in, in the next few slides, but we really want those cases dropping and consistently dropping, both in the case count in our ZIP codes, as well as the test positivity. Being in the 200s is a, a much better to be able to keep things open, so we are not going in and out. And so we want to really see those downward trends of the metrics as we move, move forward. And then again, our continued conversation with our Polk County partners, as well as the Oregon Health Authority. Salem Health is a part of this, because we know that's the local hospital. We know that the, you know, in our conversations with the central health and wellness, all of them are going to be a part of, of some of those next steps, whether that be, again, as we talk about testing, which is one of the governor's points, as well as what that may look like as we move forward to the vaccine. So again, I just, I want to take a moment. These are not easy decisions for us to make. There are, there are moving parts to all of this. We do want to get students back in school. We have a plan. I will share a little bit of that, what we have done today, and what we're going to continue to do over the next few weeks as we move forward with that. Next slide for me, please. So the, the next point is, I, I want to just emphasize, this is on December 23, the governor shared a letter with the Oregon Department of Education and the Oregon Health Authority with five points, action plans to help move us to getting students back into in-person learning. The first is the prioritization, prioritization for school leaders and educators to work together to resume that. I will tell you, we have been doing that since July. We continue to have really good conversations with, you know, again, continuing to listen to our community voice, continuing to have conversations with our union leadership, teacher leadership, our principals, and open and honest conversations. So we have and will continue to do that work together. I, again, am blessed. Doesn't mean that our conversations when we're sitting at the table aren't difficult, but everyone is staying in those conversations to move and resume as best we can when the metrics and when it is safe to move in that direction. The second point, the vaccine prioritization. We will continue to have this conversation. I have several meetings this week related to this. I'll share a little bit more about that here in the next couple of slides. We will continue to monitor this and share information, not only with the board, but obviously with our union leaderships and working through what that might look like, when that might happen. Again, that information is still sort of happening, and we'll be getting more of that information of what that looks like. And again, we'll be sharing that with the board. But again, we continue to partner with Polk County Health, with our Central Health and Wellness Center of what that might look like for us. And then again, the bigger as that, that plan begins to roll out from the state and, and then based by county. The third bullet, we have received information, or from the governor and her points, that additional access to COVID-19 testing for students and school staff. As this came out on the 23rd, I'll be very honest, I sent an email to our partners in Polk County, as well as some of the superintendents in our, in our county. We have pulled a meeting together. We had our last, our first meeting last week, continuing to work together to say, what does this look like for us as a county? How can we collectively do that? And in our conversation that we had last week, there were a, a fair amount of questions that we have, that we actually forwarded to the Oregon Department of Education and Oregon Health, just as we started to look at, what does that planning look like? What does that testing mean? So know that that's still a work in progress. I don't have any more information than what I have shared today. We are going to continue these meetings with our Polk County partners. Because again, collectively, if we can do it together, if this is where we're going, you know, myself, the Dallas Superintendent Perrydale, as well as Fall City, if there's things that we can collectively and, and really build that, so we can build systems and get this moving faster, we want to be able to do that. So again, more information to come about that, but those, those steps have happened with our Polk County partners. The fourth one is really just an alignment, Ready School, Safe Learners Guidance. Obviously, that is our, our lead. But OSHA also put out some guidance, and there are some discrepancies between those two. So one of those five-point actions is to make sure that those are aligned. And again, making sure that our safety protocols, as we return to in-person learning, are sound, are safe. I can't say enough to our, first off, what both many of our staff, Director Clark, Director Howman, Nurse Billman, our building principals, and some of the guidance they have done and developed with our protocols as we move back into the building. I think we have one of the best protocols and learning from school districts around us as we start to move in that direction. I'll share a little bit more about that here in a minute. And then again, the fifth bullet that I've, I've referenced already, that we know that there's a potential, possible review of the advisory health metrics, and that those may change in the next week and a half. So we will continue to monitor that and, and be able to have, have those conversations, not only with you all, but with the community as those metrics change. I, you know, hopefully we'll have a little bit more information as we get through this week and into next week. So again, we're, we're, many changes have happened in the short week, or really two weeks since winter break has taken place. But we are already well at work in putting some of these into place, specifically for us, first foremost, Central, but really in that Polk County perspective, to collectively do this together. So hopefully we can, we'll, we'll continue to update with that. Next slide for me, please. So the next, I just want to share just where we, where we are and where we're going, and, you know, some of the steps we're going to take here in the next week. So today, as part of our plan, because we have been building to move back, because we did have metrics in November that were allowing us to move to limited in-person, and we're continuing to move in that direction. We have a charter that has laid out our phases. Again, we've talked about kindergarten being in first, and then moving into first grade, second, third grade, are continuing to have collaborative conversations with our unions' leadership of what that looks like, with teachers that are ready to come back in, you know, being able to, to move in that direction. This, this morning and early afternoon, one of those key steps is we did a K5 safety protocol training today. And again, some of that training was some reminders, so re-going over our entry protocols, going over our physical distancing protocols. We actually have restroom use protocols, because again, a lot of this is about germs and keeping students safe, and just doing some reminders of what that looks like. Hand washing protocols, we've done some videos, our lead nurse and our nurses within our school district, Nurse Billman, did some excellent videos. We'll share that with you in the Friday, I'll share that with you in the Friday report. You'll see Alex Singer helped us on some videos, just to really share what we are trying to build from a safety perspective as it relates to protocols, so staff and students can come back into the buildings. Again, as we talk with our Polk County partners, as we continue to look at the advisory, the advisory metrics moving forward. Some of the other protocols that we went over today with staff were both entry and exit protocols. So what does that look like coming off the bus? What does that look like for walkers? What does that look like for, you know, students that are dropped off? So we started some of those entry and exit protocol review with our, our staff today. Other protocols included, well, what happens if we have a student that's in the classroom that we need to isolate? So we, we started to review with our K5 staff, this is what that process will look like. That involves PPE, that's face mask, face shield, gloves, you know, a gown. So all of those pieces of, of what that will look like are part of that. Part of that was also the, the, what's called donating and doffing PPE, that's putting on and taking off, because there's protocols of how you do that. We are having to be not only educators, but learners of what that looks like in a health perspective. So again, I cannot say enough about our partnerships with the Willamette SD, who provide our nurses and our Polk County Health, because they are helping us to develop some of these protocols, so we can get safely back into the buildings. And then we talked about, again, physical proximity, and just a couple other different protocols that we're putting into play. So again, that's one of our first steps. So again, that's one of our first steps. Staff also spent some time today, if they were in their buildings, beginning to look at what their classroom setups would look like. So again, we gave them some time throughout today, the, today to be able to do that and we'll continue to work with them moving forward. The second bullet, every Tuesday, we meet with the principals, our leadership team in the district and the principals have a constant meeting. We'll continue to have those conversations. Again, our approach will be K-5 first and foremost, with the goal of Kinder first, followed by first grade, and then again, moving up into all of our, our grade, grade levels. The third bullet, we have, I have tomorrow afternoon, there is a, a meeting between superintendents across the state and the Oregon Department of Education. So I believe we'll get a little bit more guidance of, of potentially what these metrics may look like. There have been some changes to the Ready School Safe Learners, stating that the metrics are advisory now. So we'll continue to move forward with that. We are tomorrow, actually even, Jason Clark, our principal servant, our athletic director, will be meeting to begin to talk about how do we reinstate athletics? Again, it's going to look different because we are still in that extreme category. So it's going to be smaller groups, maybe no more than 50 all outside, but we'll begin to have those conversations about what that looks like to bring back athletics and activities specifically at the, at the high school. So again, we're excited to, to continue those conversations moving forward. We will continue our collaborative conversations with union leadership. We are meeting with them monthly, if not every other week, as we continue to have these conversations. Again, I am very appreciative of all of the leadership in the school district. We have hard conversations, but we are continuing to work together to meet staff where they're at. So we can begin to build and move into in-person learning. So we'll continue those conversations with our union leadership. I have great trust in them, I have great faith in them, that we're going to continue to move our plans forward and what that looks like. We are also, or I have already sent out, as we have since July, we have a community committee that's made up of staff. We have board representation on there. We also have parent representation, student representation and our, and our community partner representation. We will be meeting with them next Wednesday. We want to be able to, as we really refine our plan, share with, that with them to gather input, break into some small groups as we do each time. And really just to hear those voices, what, as we start to build this, what concerns do we have? You know, what, are there any fatal flaws that we need to see or that anybody sees as we continue to build, build our plan? So that will take place in January 13th and potentially that, that committee maybe, again, we were for quite some time meeting every other week. But at least monthly, we will be, continue that conversation with our community committee. And then we will continue with our partnerships with our community health partners. I will tell you, we are not, I want to be clear, we are educators. And I am thankful for having the health department as well as the Central Health and Wellness Center to help us work through some of these conversations so we can move to in-person. So had some really good conversation last Wednesday and I'm very thankful for them. Again, I want to be clear, they help to guide, they don't tell us what to do. Myself, our leaderships within our buildings, with our union leaderships and the voices within our community, the community committee are really the ones helping us to drive those decision makings as we, as we move forward. And again, just, I, I want to remind everybody that this will be a phase in process, that's not going to change. We know that there could be changes with the metrics in the next week or so, so we'll have to work through what that may mean. But we will phase in this process and we want to make sure that we can do this in a way that is good for both our students, staff and our families. We know that this is going to be our reality for some time. Like I said, as we get answers as it relates to vaccines or testing, more of that will be shared. But, but again, I think that this is really what we're going to be working through for the rest of this year and potentially into next year. And I know that that, I may not be the most popular superintendent, but I'm always going to be transparent and honest. And I think that we have a, a road ahead of us still as we continue to work through this. But again, we continue to listen to all the voices and try and do and make the best decisions for everyone moving forward. With that said, I would like to propose to the board in conversation with Board Chair Love today. We would like to, because there is going to be a lot of moving parts in the next week or so. I would like to on January 19th, which is a Tuesday, because January 18th is actually a holiday. I would like to have a, a board PLC. Again, probably doing it virtually, but that would allow us to have some time to be in conversation. I can share with you where we are. We will have had the community committee meeting. Again, we can do that in a webinar forum so people can listen to our conversations because again, we want to have open and transparent conversations. So if you could look at your calendars and then please reach out to either myself or Chair Love if you do have an issue because if we do need to look at a differently date, we can do that, but we would like to, you know, just have that as, as an opportunity for us because the next week and a half, there could be a lot of moving parts moving forward. One of the last.
General Quick, is there a proposed time for that?
Probably six o'clock, 6:30. We didn't talk about specific time, but it would be in the evening.
Okay, thank you.
And PLC means Professional Learning Community. Thank you. We just want to, it's an opportunity for us, as I shared in my appreciation for the board. Our professional learning community is time where we get to actually, you know, the board meeting is quite formal in our processes, but when we are in our learning webinar, we can have more open dialogue and that's what I want to be able to do, be able to share some information and then continue that dialogue. And then we'll be working with principals if, if it's, if it's important for them to be there, I will work with them also. We'll have that conversation tomorrow to potentially have them as part of that. So we'll continue to just find a date, but that's our starting point of potentially Tuesday to 19th. And if we need to make a, a change because there are conflicts, then we will, we'll continue to, to share and talk through that. One last piece, one of the, I do want to share because there has been some questions. We did get, receive some CARES money, both from the federal level as well as the state level. We've received about $824,000 that has come to the district. Some of the questions have been asked, where, where's that money be or how are we using that money? Some of that money has already been used, about 140,000 for our, has been spent since last July for planning and some of the pieces that we've had to build as well as some of the professional development for distance learning that we have done with our staff. We know, and, and then that remaining money right now is slated to be for our K-12 platform. So there's a potential, I received today and we know and we're continuing to watch, received an email from Senator Merkley today with some federal funding that really is in the process of just working through. So over the next few weeks, I'm sure we'll get more guidance on that. Some of it's related to vaccine and testing. There's also specific money again for education. So as we see, and the governor talked about 50 million also within the state. So I don't have any more information than we know that potentially is coming. I don't know what that's going to look like yet for Central School District, but we'll continue to share that as we move, move forward. So I'm going to pause for a second before I go to our, our last slide, which is just a communication out about what we're continuing to do within the school district. So just questions from the, the board of directors.
I've, I've got a couple, Jen. So on bullet three, I don't remember which, not on this one, but it was a couple of sites before that. It said COVID-19 testing. I, it's, I assumed it was within the schools, possible locations.
So we don't, but I don't have details of that yet. I'm hoping in the next couple of weeks or we'll have a better idea. Again, we have, I have some conversations tomorrow. I have some conversations the following week. So again, what I'm sharing is what we know at this point. I take that as, yes, it would be at, at the school level, but I don't know the details of that. And again, that's why.
I was mainly just offering suggestion as far as, you know, we have that Central Wellness Center. I would, I would think that that would be a possible location. Just kind of put that in your pocket. As, you know, when you go into those meetings, I think that would be very accessible to, to teachers and students, whatever, if, if you need to go that route as far as testing on our levels. The, the next comment that I had or question that I had was on the meetings that you're having this week with the athletics, the ODE, that's, that's your meeting. Union leadership, or is any of the board invited to that at all? Is there a possibility of going to any of those?
No, I mean, what I would say is that I'll continue my communication with all of you in the Friday reports. And then again, in our conversation or my conversation with Chair Love, because we have some moving parts, I think it's going to be important that we continue to come together, potentially every other week could be for the next month. Because I do think that is going to be part of that conversation. So that's really from, from all of these changes in the last, to some degree, week and a half. That's part of the reason why we're asking to, to add that on to our calendar because I do think that we're going to need to have more communication.
And that's fine too. I, I was just hoping to get the most, the most information possible. And, and if we're having those weekly meetings, that'd be, that'll be perfect.
Yep. That will also happen, information, anything that we receive, I, as I do, will be shared in the Friday report. So again, I.
Oh yeah, in the Friday report, yeah.
Up to date as much as possible as we get that information.
Okay, thanks, Jen.
Yep. Hi Jerry, go ahead Jerry.
Jerry, we can't hear you. Is there another mute? Still not picking you up. No. Still not hearing you. We can come back to Jerry. Is anybody else have a question?
I just had a, a question on the, your conversations with the union leadership. Can you characterize where union and staff are coming from right now, sort of on a scale from, we're not going back until the pandemic has been crushed to, we don't care?
I, I, I appreciate that, Don. I think it's, it's and in both. I think that we are trying to work with staff that are ready to come back and that's been some of those conversations that continue to happen amongst our building principals and, and with their leadership, both on the licensed side and classified side. I think we have unique situations. There are staff that fall into some of those high-risk categories. So we're also very cognizant of, of some of those pieces. We also know that have staffer caregivers could be for, you know, a, a myriad of, of things with, with people in their homes. So, you know, I think what I'm appreciative about both unions is they're continuing to stay open to the conversation. We're, we're trying to continue to meet staff where they're at. We do have staff that are ready to come back and so those are the conversations that we're continuing to have with them. So I, I still think it's a mix. There is, again, I, I want to be clear is, you know, we, we have had some outbreaks with our staff and I shared some numbers in the, in the past. And we have had some staff that have had COVID and are positive or have been around and have had to be quarantined because of, of the people around them. And again, I think that's one of the, the key pieces as we, as we do this of just making sure that everything that we put in place is, is safe, that staff feel safe. Again, I think today in our conversation, you know, keeping the, the safety at the forefront and, and understand that, again, our staff wants students back in, in school as much as our, we do as a board, as a superintendent, as much as our families do. But there's also a piece that their safety, our staff's safety is a priority too. So, so our job is really to, to monitor that and manage that and, and try and meet staff where they are that we, you know, whether that's, we continue to share about our safety protocols, which we did today and we'll continue to do that as well as, you know, what does, what does that testing look like now that that's been shared by the governor? When does, when will we have the vaccine? Where are we in that order? You know, hopefully I'll, I don't know that I'm going to get exact details of that, but again, I believe I'm in some conversations in the next week that will, will help guide a little bit to be able to continue those conversations. So like I said, I, they're, they're continuing to be at the table. They're, they're very transparent with us of what the concerns are and how we collectively do that together and what that, what that looks like. So we'll continue those conversations. I think that they're open, you know, staff, there are staff that have come back into the buildings. Some of it's because of internet and, and things that they may have of where they're located. So we're trying to build and move into that direction with them. But again, they're open and they're staying at the table, but that doesn't mean that we don't have concerns because again, the, the mental health and health of the students is a priority as well as our staff. And again, our goal is to keep everyone safe so we don't have this in and out, which I, I really believe it would be more detrimental than being either one or the other, and, and that's what we're trying to avoid right now.
Yes, the, my second question is related, but tied more to the community and the parents. Certainly based on the feedback that we've gotten tonight and that we've gotten in the past. There's a lot of pressure to get kids back into school, but I assume there are some opposite pressures that from people that don't want their kids to go back to school yet. Do you have any sense for where that is? I know one of the letters that came in suggested a community survey. I don't know that that's necessary, but just based on the people that you talk to and the community input that you get, is there a big shift in the community's feeling that we should put more pressure on getting the kids back into school?
I don't know of a huge shift. I, I think that there is, everybody knows that in-person is, is the best learning for, for students first and foremost. However, I do, we have heard stories and it's been shared by principals, has been shared by family, parents and, and families with me that, and, and again, we shared this at the beginning of the year, that there, we knew that this environment of distance learning was going to be successful for students. I have stories that we have students that have made a year and a half growth already by being in this environment. I have stories from parents that students did not like going to school and their student is up every day, in the shower, has breakfast, sitting in front of their computer, ready to learn and doing it all by themselves where before. And then, and again, these are third graders, second graders, fourth grader stories that are being shared with us. I do think there is a, a percentage of, I'm going to say 20 to 40% of our community that is not ready for kids to be back into school. That's part of our planning and what that would look like. Again, I think that, that in part of our conversations that we were moving in that direction. Our elementary specifically had started to reach out to families. We had done Kinder, so we have those numbers of who would be ready to come in and who wouldn't. Again, that was about a month ago. So we know that as we really look at bringing, bringing students in, that could change. But that's some of our processes that we're doing. That will be some of our next steps that we'll want to do with the rest of our first through fifth grade families as we move forward. So again, those are those continued conversations with our, specifically right now, our elementary building principals, but also having that conversation with our secondary principals of what does that look like leading into the, to the second semester? So again, I think it's a mix. I'm not hearing extreme one way or the other. I, I do think that we have again, probably between 20 and 40% of our families that are not ready to come back into the buildings. And, and we have to build a plan. And we have to build a plan for that as well. So that is part of our conversations as we talk through staffing, etc., of what that will look like.
Thanks.
Jen, I have I have one more thing, not well, as you were talking about that, just a quick comment. My son's actually one of those that seems to be excelling in in the in the distance learning part. I don't I don't like it as much that he's on the screen the whole time, because he he's a big gamer, too. So but I think that kind of helps him a little bit as far as distance learning. And I've heard a couple other parents express the same, that they're like, oh, he's 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 just on Fortnite, but it's school instead. And then it's Fortnite afterwards or whatever. I don't know what that means. But but my I have noticed that my son is is definitely doing better than he would have been doing, I think. The other the other question that I had was on on this page, the six bullet plan on the community committee meeting. Is it too late for anybody to join that? Because I've had a couple of people ask me that from the community. I've told them that it's it's been going on for a few months now already. But is there a way for them to engage with that that group at all?
Yeah, a couple options. Again, part of that is we wanted, in that initial approach, what I asked our principals is I wanted parents and and community. I mean, again, we have community partners, but families that both are going to push us, that may not agree with us, because we wanted them as part of that committee. So there's a couple of, they want to reach out to the building principals if they have interest, they can do it that way. Or they can share with me and then we'll do some follow up with them. Again, we have a great voice of of community members and have added on a couple at a couple buildings because they had lower numbers. So depending on that, absolutely, we're we're we'll look into that. And again, please feel free to share that, either if they feel more comfortable sharing that with their building administrator, then the building administrators can share that with me and we'll start that dialogue, or they can come directly to me. They can send it an email to info@central and that will get to me as if they are interested in in that. So again, please feel free to have them share that with us as we continue to to use that as one of our platforms to to gather information.
Excellent. Thank you, Jen.
So I might try summarizing, you know, what Superintendent Cavista's kind of update and then the board kind of feedback based upon your questions where I'm guessing most of the board is at. Let me let me try to summarize it in the form of guiding principles. And I think this is really what we're going to be using to to get to decisions about restarting in-person learning. So the first thing we heard about is we're doing this with other districts in the county. We're trying to do this consistently. But, you know, talking with the other districts in the county as well as continuing discussions with ODE. So we want to be consistent with what's happening statewide and locally. We want to do this in partnership with our unions, really important that we do this together. Those are going to be really important ongoing discussions, but partnership with our our unions. We want to be aligned with the advisory guidelines. We don't necessarily have to hold ourselves strictly to those now. So what that does is it puts us in a situation where you have to kind of monitor what the health advisors are telling us from the county or the state, what other districts are doing and and almost get to the point of making a judgment call relative to those advisory metrics. We, right now, at the 400 per 100,000 are higher than what we'd like it to be. We prefer it to be closer to 200, although we're going to closely monitor that. We may hear later this month that those guidelines are going to get changed and probably increased. In other words, it might say 300 is what the prior 200 was. So advisory metrics will be a part of our decision making, but it's now advisory, which puts us in a situation where we have to monitor, again, what's happening across across the state. We have to be cognizant of stopping and starting. If we go too fast, only to have to stop and go through that cycle a few times, that will create more anxiety and issues for us to manage than if we had just taken a little bit more time. However, I would say that the bias is towards restarting as soon as possible. And so, you know, all of this is a balancing act, right? Balancing overall rates coming down, the rate of the vaccine coming out, the
Potential
testing and the wear and tear that this the current situation is having on kids and families. So we're as well as the safety of our staff. So we're going to, and the reason I asked Jen or suggested that we get together in a couple of weeks is I think we all have to come together and keep coming together to make sure that that intersection of those different points of view, we're all kind of understanding. But I also think we need to push ourselves to get to a point sometime this month where we can say, oh, these are the conditions that we're going to be looking for to to restart, because that was one of the the comments from one of the parents. And I think it's a good one about, you know, can't we state a specific date? What I think we should be doing is stating specific conditions and a targeted date. If we can get to these conditions, we will start in this timeframe. And right now, we can't state that because the governor's change on this just came out before the break. And now we're in the mode of, you know, kind of collecting all of the information that we need in order to finalize kind of what our response is going to be. And then, you know, lastly, a lot of the work that we did early on in the pandemic, early this school year, around the safety protocols, the hygiene protocols, the cohort management, all of that has to be a part of the restarting of in-person learning, right? So we have to make sure that those plans and our staff that we're ready to go. And that's a big piece of doing this safely. So really having our our, you know, our game plan really well laid out and ready to go is a piece of this that we'll be working on over the next month. In fact, Jennifer, I think that's what you've already started that today. I mean, that was the first thing that you told me, and I think you started on today as we restarted and had in-service day. So, you know, from a board perspective, I think that's how we should be approaching it. We certainly want to get the kids back into the classroom, but we want it to be, you know, in in the balanced way where it's safe for our staff, consistent with other districts, where we're not going to be in and out, in and out, and creating other turmoil. But, you know, we're going to have to figure this out, because we're likely to be in the same situation two months from now, four months from now, six months from now. This will not go away. What I think we've learned is this will not go away in the next month or two. That means we have to learn how to operate with with this virus in our system. And we have, we have to figure out how we're going to do that. And I think lastly, that, you know, having a hybrid model or some type of a choice, which is what we were planning earlier in the year, when we did the survey, is probably going to, it has to be a part of the solution as well. So I, you know, I think I was taking notes as Jennifer was going through that. And this was again, part of what I want to talk about in our PLC meeting is to make sure that we're all clear on what these different factors are, what our guidance is that's representative of the overall kind of community, so that we can, you know, do this together. Does that make sense?
I guess, Steve, maybe the only thing that I would add would be to the to the metrics and our view and judgment of the metrics. I think we need, we haven't had the option of taking them with a grain of salt in the past, because they were handed to us and told that we needed to follow them. But we also know that there are other school districts in the country that have been running in the same kind of environment that we're in right now with kids back full time in the schools with teachers, and they're still not showing any kind of major breakout kind of problem. And what that tells me just from a, for you engineers on the crew, from a black box standpoint, is we can lean a little farther that way and and not be taking on a huge amount of risk. And so I think our bias, as you said, needs to be a little bit harder or farther towards getting kids back into school than it was a week ago or two weeks ago or or two months ago.
And I would, the other part I would add to that is, again, I think we need to step into this. So as you look at this, right, it may be starting with, let's get the students in for a couple hours. Let's get that consistently at all grade levels. Let's then move into how do we move into that hybrid? Because again, I think the more that we can get this moving in that direction and then expand it, is how I'm going to say, as we learn and adapt, because again, we built all these safety protocols. Some of them we have tried with staff, some we have done with, as we, I mean, we had two days of limited in-person and we learned a lot in those two days. It really formed some of the protocols that we went through with our with our staff today. So I think we're we're moving in that right direction. The only other thing that I would say is, I want to be clear about consistency with the school districts around us. But if the other pieces that is, and again, going back to what you said, Don, is from the metrics advisory standpoint, you know, that what we're seeing in Dallas is different than Monmouth and Independence. So again, we're continuing to have those collaborative conversations, but not always do we look the same. So I just am transparent about that. We are continuing to have those those conversations collectively. And how do we move in that direction? Again, I think, Steve, as you stated this, those guiding principles are exactly what we are continuing to develop and have. Again, we have a elementary charter that we have started and has been in place since November. But because of the, you know, a complete swing from 200 to being in the 400s, again, you know, some of that has shifted. And again, I believe we're going to have a shift, not in probably a month, in a week and a half again, for these advisory metrics. So again, that's going to be some learning and then some sharing, again, with our leadership groups and moving forward. But those are some key, those key guiding principles. I appreciate that of of how we're going to move forward, moving back to in-person.
I want to thank Steve for taking all those notes. I was I was trying to take a little bit of those notes. You brought up a lot of the the things that I wish that I would have taken notes on. And and I think you're right. I think that and 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 Superintendent Cavista as well, I mean, we all want kids to be back in school. We wanted to do it safely. I think we've seen a lot of not so much about face, but understanding and learning from a lot of the the top doctors in in the nation and in the world that are saying now that, you know, schools might be the safest place, you know, the most sterile places, the that it could happen sooner than later. And then I think when the governor made her announcement, I think that put a lot of of hope in in our communities. And and unfortunately, some of it is is it's not as accessible as as what maybe the wording that the the governor put out. One of the emails, I'm sure you guys got it as well, of a student bouncing off the walls that when her mom got home, saying that she just heard that the governor said they could go back to school. Well, it's not not that simple. And I think that we need to to really put that out as far as, you know, what we require to say to get kids back into school. But I think that when we're saying that that's what we want as a school board, as a superintendent, as teachers and and communities, I think that's a positive message that that we're on the same page as far as wanting the best for our kids. And Jen, you you said it perfectly, is that that's the best option for kids to learn is in person. And we're doing what we can. The whole world is doing what they can. I just think that that when we start getting towards that, towards that point, you know, when we see our surrounding communities, and we've said this from from back in March of last year, that, you know, we don't want to do that stop and go. We don't want to start something and put all this time and effort and money and 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 hope and and dreams just to see it all crash down the next day because a new order comes out or a new metric comes out or advisory metric. And and I I think that 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 would be detrimental to to a student's psyche as well. You know, when when they are happy to go back to school, only to be have the carpet pulled from them, their feet. So I feel like I'm rambling now, but I just feel like we're 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 going the right direction. It might not be the at the same speed as the communities around us. It might not be at the speed that 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 I would like to see or that the communities would like to see. But, you know, like you said, the measures could change in a week or two, or the advisory metrics could change. We have all these different, it seems like it changes every every other week.
It does.
It does.
And that's why we build something up just to have to rebuild. You know, and and I I know I have a lot of constituents that that are this want want us to open up. And and I want to open up. But, you know, we got to do it safely. We got to think of of the the community in general, as well as our kids. There was, I mean, the testimonies that we heard today were, gosh, heartbreaking. You know, I shed tears on on a couple of them. And and with with our position, I don't want to shed tears of sorrow. I want to shed tears of joy to see our our kids succeeding and our community succeeding. So
And Vidal, let me add to that, I think, and even with what some of our community members have shared today. I think, you know, this is not only short term, but this is long term. We know that the effects, we're already starting to have those conversations about what does that look like next year, the following year, what are our, again, some of that we'll start to share with you all. What are our priorities from a budget? What is untouchable for the next three to five years that we know we're going to do? And how do we do that? And how do we work with the leaderships within our buildings in what that looks like? So
Questions, so many, so many obstacles and and things to to hurdles to jump. And I think we're doing a lot of that as best as we can. And we're just going to get better. And I just want to make sure that we communicate that to to the community and to each other.
Yep. And we'll and we'll we'll continue those those communications as well. So I appreciate that that lens, Vidal.
Hey, Jerry, did you still have a question?
I think he's still working through that. And I'll I'll make sure, Steve, I connect with him to make sure.
Let's go ahead and move forward.
Yep. Yep, one last slide I have. And then I just want to do, we have started to continue to do some policy updates. So I just want to do a quick update with that. So the next slide, my last piece is just reminder, we we do have a grant, a federal grant that we've been working with the cities in my net. I received, we're working through, we had received word that potentially, because this grant was to end or has ended as of December 31st. However, we're following up on some information. We we, the federal government has pushed that date further out. And so we may be able to continue that. So we're starting those conversations. But in case we cannot continue that, we are, just want to share again with our partnership with the Monmouth Independence Community Foundation. We've started a campaign, Keeping Central Connected, so we can continue to, so community can donate to. And you just put in, there's a donate link, you put in the notes section, please donate to the Student Digital Fund. I know right now that we have enough funding to get through January. But again, please know that I'm working with our city partners as well as my net to see if we can continue with that grant moving forward. So I'll have an update for the board as we move forward with that. So we can go ahead and stop the PowerPoint. And then I'm just going to share, as I always do, we are continuing to update some policies. So you'll see them listed within the board agenda. So I'm just going to quickly go through the first one, AC. And again, this is first reading, so there's no action by the board. Many of these are minor changes, but again, this is part of the process. And I, because of what we've been going through with the pandemic, we have not had as much attention to this. And I, because of what we've been going through with the pandemic, we have not had as much attention to this and we're getting back to that. So we can make sure our policies are consistent and up to date. So AC is the non-discrimination policy, where you will see minor changes to that policy. That includes discriminatory use, part of that language is removing and not allowing discriminatory use of Native American mascots. Again, we don't have that within our school district, but that's one of the changes. The next policy, IGAI, is specific human sexuality, AIDS, HIV, sexually transmitted diseases and health education. Again, this is a revision in alignment with Oregon Administrative Rule 5810222050. This was an update. And it's just adding language that is really identifying that, making sure that all of these programming and curriculum is culturally as we continue with a comprehensive plan of instruction in these areas. And again, it's just really making that policy more inclusive. The next one for first reading is II CC that deals with volunteers. The State Board of Education in their June meeting revised the Oregon Administrative Rule related to criminal record checks and fingerprinting of employees, contractors and criminal record checks and optional fingerprinting of, and volunteers. Again, it's a clarification of definition related to conviction and most of the, of the repealed language was moved into the revised OSAR, which again is sort of housekeeping cleanup for that policy. The next one, JED, which is student absences and excuses. And I believe we've touched base on this, but again, we needed to make a change to the policy. House Bill 2191 added mental health and behavioral health of students as an excused absence. Additionally, House Bill 2556 allowed us up to seven days of excuse absences for a student who is a dependent of a member of the US military or, excuse me, US Armed Forces, who is on active duty or called to active duty. So that's part of a change there. The next one, JHFDA, suspension of students' driving privileges. This is no longer, this is being deleted. Oregon revised statute 339254 and 339.257 repealed this legislation. And so we are removing that as part of our policies. And then as just information, there are two ARs that go with that, which will be deleted also from, from our policies. And then the last one, KL, which is our public complaints process. These reminder changes to the policies, it's more of language housekeeping cleanup tied to Division 22, et cetera. So again, just more concise, clear language for those policies. So again, this is our first reading. No, no necessary adoption or, or motions from the board at this time. We'll move to a second reading, next board meeting. And that is it for my report.
Very good. Thank you so much for that overview and discussion and the work, ongoing work on the policies. So the next topic then is the board report. I don't have a lot. We've already talked about scheduling a PLC meeting here in a couple of weeks, Tuesday evening. We do have another PLC meeting scheduled on February 22nd. I think we keep that for now. We may well need to operate in the mode of doing monthly PLC meetings in addition to our normal first Monday board meetings. Which, speaking of that, the next one is on February 1st, and that'll come up pretty quickly for us. The other thing I'll mention is that we are going to go into executive session after our board meeting tonight. And the topic is going to be the superintendent evaluation. Also, we'll, we'll go through that and talk about the contract as well with our superintendent. And then lastly, about six months ago, I had talked to Brandy Penner, who's our, I think we're District 13. She's from Newburgh, Chair of the Newburgh School District, represents us on OSBA. I think it's a good time to pull that group of board members back together again to compare notes on what we've been talking about tonight. So I was going to reach out to Brandy and suggest that. The last time we did this, we got Jim Green to join us for a few minutes from OSBA and, and was giving his, you know, get a real-time updates on what was happening from his perspective. So if I do get that scheduled, I'll let you all know and you'd be welcome to join that. Last time we did it, it was a, it was an interesting discussion, you know, board members getting together to talk about the current situation, just like Jennifer's doing with other superintendents. It's probably, probably a good thing to do right now. So that would be school districts from, you know, McMenville, Newburgh, yeah, Mill Carlton, Dallas, ourselves. I think that's about it, but Perry Dale. Okay, any questions for me? Okay, that moves us to our consent agenda. We've got the minutes from last month and we have the final reading of our all-students belong policy, our new policy. Part of the work of the Equity Committee. So that's, that's awesome. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Don. Do I have a second? I'll take Darcy on that. I think she was first. Go right to the, the vote on the, on the motion. So all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please raise your right hand. I think I can see everybody. Okay, that passes unanimously. And that brings us to our business agenda topic for this evening, which is the local service plan resolution.
Yep.
Superintendent.
Yeah, and we, I apologize for bringing this back, but as we were going through, we realized we had put the wrong date in there. And so the attachment here is for the 2021-23 resolution. So again, each year, the Board of Directors needs to approve. And again, this is the 2021 through 23 local service plan resolution. And again, this is a conversation that we have with the Willamette Education Service District, usually in April. The different services, as we've talked about before, special education, other areas that they provide to us. Again, crisis response, use suicide prevention if we do need them, tech, technology supports if we need them. And again, those are just to name a few. So I just need a motion pursuant to provision of ORS 334.175. The Board of Directors of Central School District, the following 2021-23 Local Service Plan Resolution as proposed by the Willamette Education Service District.
Do I have a motion?
I still move.
Thank you, Vidal. Do I have a second? Jan? Okay, all in favor of the motion as presented by the superintendent, please raise your right hand. That motion passes unanimously. And that brings us to our wrap-up for this evening. Do we have any additional comments that the board members would like to share at this time?
I, I did, but I think I, I shared mostly what I had to say on that nitripe that I went on. But I do want to, want to thank everybody for coming on board and, and tackling such a, a huge issue in our community and in our, our state, in our nation, really. Fresh off the break. I mean, it's, it's hard to be on Easy Street during a break and then jump into our, our shoes and, and make decisions that are, are tough. And I want to thank Superintendent Kubista as well for, you know, maintaining during the break and, and after the break too. It's just, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough job. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thanks, Vidal. I'm going to actually piggyback on those comments because I think three of us on the board have kids in, in the school system. And like, we're kind of seeing things firsthand, you know, over the break. It was doing everything possible to try to get some of the kids just stuff to do. You know, they're, especially the high school kids without extracurricular activities, sports or testifying stuff. It's really, really hard on them. And so, you know, in addition to everything we've talked about with distance learning, the social aspect of what we, what we do in our, our schools, it's never been so clear to me how important that is in the development of our kids. It's just amazing to me. So let's, let's keep trying to move forward as best we can. And, and that, and that includes, you know, just getting the kids back involved in some of these activities. Yeah, Dan?
I, I just want to thank the, the community members, the parents that talked tonight. I think that what they had to say was heartbreaking. And in many ways to echo what you just said, Steve, true. We know that, that our kids belong in school and that we want them there as quickly and safely as we can get them there. But the degree of courage it took for those parents, I think, is, is to be complimented. And I want them to know that their words are heard and appreciated.
Well said. Maybe, maybe future board members there.
Maybe.
Okay, anybody else? All right, let's go ahead then. We will be adjourning our normal public board meeting at this point in time and adjourning into executive session. There won't be any decisions made during the executive session tonight. So.
Steve, the script for the executive session is in the agenda, so you do have to be.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. So under the provisions of ORS 192.660, open meeting law, the Board of Directors will enter executive session for the following purpose, to review and evaluate the performance of the superintendent or any other public officer, employee or staff member, unless that meet person requests an open hearing. So we are adjourned and now in executive session.